Good morning, everyone, and welcome to our Board of Commissioners meeting this January 21st, 2025. In January each year in lieu of having a zoning meeting, we have an annual county comprehensive plan meeting where we discuss proposed amendments to our county comprehensive plan. We will have our community development staff walk us through those proposed changes, but that will be following our observation or moment of silence, which will be followed by the pledge. I'm going to ask for you who are here today, please join me and the board in a moment of silence. Thank you. Please rise for our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and our meeting is now called to order. I will turn things over to Philip Westbrook with Community Development to walk us through today's meeting.
Thank you, Chair. Good Tuesday morning. It's a pleasure to be here on this cold, wintry day, especially in this warm room here. Again, I'm Philip Westbrook, Senior Planner, Community Development, here today to facilitate our 2025 Comprehensive Plan Amendment process. Just a little bit of background before we get into each of the cases. The Georgia Planning Act of 1989 established comprehensive planning activities for each jurisdiction within the state of Georgia. Obviously, Cobb is required to create and maintain a long-range planning document, which is our comprehensive plan. Basically, it is a long-range document that guides future growth and development. It is part of the maintenance plan on this document is updated every five years, which is pretty significant updates. Our last update was 2022, and our next update is 2027. That is a required update. Cobb County in the past has typically conducted annual updates, which are small-scale changes to the Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map, and that is what we are here today for, is those small-scale changes to the Future Land Use Map. We have two different types of updates. We have zoning decisions and commission proposals. The zoning decisions are based off of a 12-month period of rezonings beginning in October of 2023 and ending in October of 2024, in which properties were rezoned to a zoning district that were incompatible with the future land use. We have six zoning decisions this year in this amendment process. And then our commission proposals are proposals that were sponsored by commissioners, but ultimately come from the community to help provide a clear direction and guidance for future growth and development. One thing with the commission proposals, these proposals have been advertised through road signs near the location of where those amendments are, as well as property owners were mailed letters explaining the amendments and the proposals and how they can provide feedback and so forth. One thing to note, I do want to stress that this is a long-range planning document. It is a policy guidance document. It is not a regulation. It is not a development ordinance. It is merely just one tool that can be used to help make land use decisions and growth decisions for the future of Cobb County. So that does not impact the zoning of property owners. The property owners can continue to use their property as they wish, based on the zoning district that they have underlying on their property. So we'll start out with the zoning decisions, and Chair, if you don't mind, I'll go through the process of how this is going to take shape, because, you know, we do this once a year. It's a little bit unusual. It's not your typical zoning hearing. Of course, it's not a zoning at all, but... So what I'll do is I'll read off all the zoning decision cases, one by one. After I read off each case, Chair, if you would ask the audience if there's anyone that'd like to speak for or against, and if there is a speaker, we'll set that off to the side. We'll continue moving forward. And then, at the end, after reading off all the zoning decision cases, you, the board, will vote on... Have a large motion on the cases that did not have any opposition. And then after that motion or after that vote, we'll come back to the cases that did have speakers, and we'll read those back into the record and allow the speakers to come up. And I believe they have three minutes to speak and provide their information, so... And with that, I think we can go ahead and get started, and obviously, we'll do the commission proposals right after that.
Okay, thank you.
So as I read off these cases, what I'm going to do is I'm going to start off with the case. The case, and of course, with these zoning decisions, I will provide the zoning case that relates to the zoning decision, and then I'll read off the commission district, the current and proposed future land use, the location, and then I'll conclude the reading with the planning commission recommendations. So, let's see, get my self situated here. All right. So with that, we'll start off with ZD-1. ZD-1 is based on zoning case Z38 from October of 2023. It is in Commission District 2. The existing future land use is low-density residential, and the proposed future land use is medium-density residential. The site is located on the west side of Spring Hill Road and on the south side of Simpson Road. The planning commission recommendation is for approval.
Okay, thank you, Philip, for reading that. Is there anyone here in the audience today that would like to address this particular zoning decision? All right, thank you.
Okay, ZD-2 is based on zoning case Z1.
Excuse me, let me back up. I'm asking the audience. I need to ask the commissioners. They have the ability to address this.
Right, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Commissioners, do you have any comments? All right, thank you.
ZD-2 is based on zoning case Z1, which was approved in February of 2024. It is in Commission District 4. The existing future land use is low-density residential and Neighborhood Activity Center, and the proposed future land use is Neighborhood Activity Center. The site is located on the east side of Mableton Parkway and on the north side of Community Road. Planning commission recommendation is for approval.
All right, thank you, Philip. Commissioners, do you have any questions, comments regarding this zoning decision?
No questions, but if you can repeat the zoning number again for me, the zoning case.
Z1.
Z1, okay, thanks.
Okay, is there anyone here in the audience that would like to address this proposal for ZD-2? All right, thank you.
Zoning decision ZD-3 is based on Z12 from April of 2024. It is in Commission District 4. The existing future land use is Mableton Town Center with subcategory of medium-density residential, and the proposed future land use is Mableton Town Center with subcategory Neighborhood Activity Center. The site is located on the east side of Floyd Road and on the south side of Ayers Road. Planning commission recommendation is for approval.
Okay, thank you, Philip. Commissioners, do you have any comments or questions? Okay, not hearing any. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address this zoning decision? All right, thank you.
ZD-4 is based on Z13, which was approved in May of 2024. It is Commission District 2. The existing future land use is medium-density residential, and the proposed future land use is public-institutional. The site is located on the west side of Cooper Lake Road, north of Daniel Street, and the planning commission recommendation is for approval.
Okay, is there anyone on the board that has any questions or comments? Okay, is there anyone here in the audience who would like to address zoning decision 4? Okay, we can continue.
ZD-5 is based on Z36 from August of 2024. It is in Commission District 2. The existing future land use is Regional Activity Center with subcategory of Retail Services, and the proposed future land use is Regional Activity Center with a subcategory of High Density Residential. The tract is located on the southeast side of Lodge Road, east of Greer's Chapel Road. Planning commission recommendation is for approval.
Okay, anyone on the board have any questions, comments? Okay, anyone in our audience? All right, we'll move on.
ZD-6 is based on Z15 from August of 2024. It is in Commission District 2. The existing future land use is Community Activity Center, and the proposed future land use is High Density Residential. The site is located on the south side of Chastain Road, on the west side of Chastain Meadows Parkway. Planning commission recommendation is for denial.
Okay, I'll ask the commissioners if they have any comments or questions.
Yeah, this one, I do... I don't know if I'd need to ask her for pulling it off for later.
Go ahead. Would you like to pull it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, you can pull it for discussion.
Thank you.
And that concludes our zoning decision.
Thank you. I'm going to ask quickly if anybody in the audience has any questions or comments regarding ZD-6. All right, thank you. So Philip, I just have... ZD-6 is the only one being pulled off.
Correct, that's what I have as well.
All right. Commissioners, in the interest of time, I'd like to vote on ZD-1 through ZD-5 in bank. And I move that we approve the zoning decision Comprehensive Plan amendments for ZD-1 through ZD-5 as they have been presented.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Yes, Commissioner Gamble.
I'd like the clerk to record my statement as was given on January 21st of 2025 to... Or I'm sorry, January 14th, today is the 21st. January 14th of 2025, Board of Commissioners meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner. Are there any other comments? All right, we'll call the question. The motion carries 3-1 with Commissioner Gamble opposing, and also Commissioner Broll is not present with us today. She has experienced a death in her family, so please keep her in your thoughts. All right, Philip, we can go ahead and just hear ZD-6.
Correct. What I'll do, just to be safe, I'll read it back in.
Okay.
ZD-6 is based on Z15 from August of 2024, Commission District 2. The existing future land use is Community Activity Center, and the proposed future land use is High Density Residential. Site is located on the south side of Chastain Road, on the west side of Chastain Meadows Parkway. Planning commission recommendation is for denial.
Okay, I'll turn things over to you, Commissioner.
And I do concur with the planning commission's recommendation on this one. So do I... It not truly questions. It's... There's concern about this particular zoning decision, because from my understanding, the spirit of that zoning was to achieve MDR with all of the stipulations, and so the... I know the Civic Association has concerns that have been expressed, and certainly the planning commission. There is a thought to try to find a compromise somewhere for a zoning designation that meets the spirit of that zoning, but also is appropriate step down for the surrounding rack or the nearby rack. So that is the premise on why I'm agreeing with the planning commission's assessment. And question, do I just motion on that or separately?
Yeah, so you can just have a motion, just take it.
Okay, motion to deny ZD-6.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 4-0 with Commissioner Broll being absent.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll start with the commission proposals now, and we have 12 of those that we can run through. And where it is? All right. CP-1-1A is in Commission District 1 and proposes to change the future land use from low-density residential to public-institutional. The site is located on the west side of Campus Loop Road, north of Chastain Road. Planning commission recommendation is for approval.
Okay, are there any comments or questions from commissioners? Are there any from the audience? Okay.
CP-1-1B is in Commission District 1 and proposes to change the future land use from Regional Activity Center with a subcategory Retail Services and Regional Activity Center Subcategory Office to Regional Activity Center Public Institutional.
All right, I'm sorry, go ahead.
The tract is located on the west side of Busby Drive, north of Big Shanny Road, and the planning commission recommendation is for approval.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, do you have any comments or concerns? Are there any from the audience? Okay.
CP-1-1C is in Commission District 1 and proposes to change the future land use from priority industrial area to public-institutional. The site is located on the east and west sides of Chastain Road, west of Town Point Drive, and south of Big Shanny Road. Planning commission recommendation is for approval.
Okay, any comments or concerns from commissioners? Any from our audience? Okay.
CP-1-1D is in Commission District 1 and proposes to change the future land use from Neighborhood Activity Center to Public Institutional. The site is located on the east side of Campus Loop Road, north of Big Shanny Road. The planning commission recommendation is for approval.
Okay, any comments or concerns from commissioners? And are there any in our audience?
All right, CP-1-2 is in Commission District 1 and proposes to change the future land use from Regional Activity Center with Subcategory Retail Services to Community Activity Center. The site is located on the west side of Greer's Chapel Road, south of Ernest Barrett Parkway. The planning commission recommendation is for approval.
All right, any comments or concerns from commissioners? Any from our audience?
CP-1-3 is in Commission District 1 and proposes to change the future land use from priority industrial area to park, recreation, conservation. The site is located on the west side of Barrett Lakes Boulevard, north of Cobb Place Boulevard. The planning commission recommendation is for approval.
All right, any comments or questions from commissioners? Any within our audience?
CP-1-4 is in Commission District 1 and proposes to change the future land use from low-density residential to public-institutional. The site is located on the west side of Powder Springs Road, south of County Services Parkway. Planning commission recommendation is for approval.
Okay, any concerns or comments from commissioners? Are there any within our audience?
CP-3-1 is in Commission District 3 and proposes a change in the future land use from medium-density residential to low-density residential. The site is located on the east side of Alabama Road, north of Lindsey Way. The planning commission recommendation is for approval.
Okay, any comments from commissioners? Any within our audience?
All right, CP-3-2 is in Commission District 3 and proposes to remove the existing small-area policy guideline that currently exists on the tract. The site is located on the west side of Johnson Ferry Road, north of Paper Mill Road. The planning commission recommendation is for approval.
Okay, any comments from commissioners? Any within our audience?
CP-4-1 is in Commission District 4 and proposes a change in the future land use from Neighborhood Activity Center to low-density residential. The site is located on the south side of Percerson Mill Road, west of Ossdale Road. Planning commission recommendation is for approval.
Okay, any comments from commissioners? Any from our audience?
All right, CP-4-2 is in Commission District 4 and proposes a change in the future land use from Neighborhood Activity Center to low-density residential. The site is located on the north and south sides of Evergreen Drive and Warren Drive, west of Ossdale Road. Planning commission recommendation is for approval.
All right, any comments from commissioners? Any within our audience?
And CP-4-3 is in Commission District 4 and proposes a change in the future land use from medium-density residential to low-density residential. The site is located on the west side of Cooper Lake Road, north of Veterans Memorial Highway. Planning commission recommendation is for approval.
All right, any comments from commissioners? Any within our audience? Yes, we do have one person who would like to comment. What we can do, sir, is we'll call you up in a moment. We'll vote on the others in bank, and then we'll hear this particular one. Okay. All right, thank you. So we'll pull CP-4-3. All right, with that, Commissioners, similar to the zoning decision amendments, I move that we approve CP-1-1A through CP-4-2 as they have been discussed. I move that we approve them for our Comprehensive Plan amendments.
Second.
All right, is there any further discussion? We'll call the question. The motion carries 4-0, recognizing Commissioner Broll is not here. We will now hear Commissioner Propose's Plan Amendment 4-3, and Philip, if you can walk us through that first before we hear from our audience member.
Do I... I guess I... I'm sorry.
It's okay. We still have one more, similar to the...
All right. CP-4-3.
Yes.
Is in Commission District 4 and proposes a change in the future land use from medium-density residential to low-density residential. The site is located on the west side of Cooper Lake Road, north of Veterans Memorial Highway. Planning commission recommendation is for approval.
All right, thank you. And Commissioners, I'm going to let the audience member speak and then turn it over to you for deliberation. With that, sir, if you can come forward and just state your name for the record before you proceed with your comments.
My name is James Rossick, and I reside at 2141 Sedalia Court. Good morning, Madam Chairwoman and Commissioners. Is this really necessary? I have no objection to any of the proposed Future Land Use Map amendments. After all, the Future Land Use Map binds our Comprehensive Plan to our zoning regulations. For some context real quick, quoting from staff's 2025 Comp Plan Amendments PowerPoint, the 2040 Comp Plan is also the basis for land use regulations and provides a nexus between Cobb's future vision and regulation of private property. However, the previously mentioned nexus between the Comp Plan and zoning regulations is nowhere to be found in the current draft of the UDC. We've had a good union for about 35 years now. Why the divorce? I recommend seeking an attorney's counsel before initiating a divorce. Divorce was planned from the start. It was a carryover recommendation from the November 2023 Code Assessment, paraphrasing footnote 1 on page 240. The proposed zone districts, the future land use categories, it goes on, will not be included in the new UDC. Goes on to say that all of the existing Future Land Use Map categories will be canceled. Continuing Section 1.6.1, official zoning district map, and again, this is in the UDC draft, establishes the official zoning map without any accompanying future land use map. Based on the Georgia Planning Act, OCGA and DCA rules, could this divorce jeopardize our qualified local government status? No one can point to an example in Georgia where a local government with a future land use map went on to divorce it from their zoning code. I'll provide a few rule references, and again, please seek legal counsel on this before proceeding. OCGA 50-8-2, definition of Comp Plan, goes on to include implementation of comprehensive plans. Everyone knows the main implementation tool of a comprehensive plan is the zoning code. Another section from 58.2, Qualified Local Government, 18A, has a Comp Plan, B, implementation mechanisms. Again, zoning code. DCA Rule 110-12-1, we're required to have a land use element. Now, I've been asking questions. It may have inadvertently reported us to DCA, but I'm trying to get an answer on this. If you will sort this out, I will come back and talk about sections of the draft UDC that absolutely do need to be divorced. I'd like to mention one more thing, if I have the time. There is a particular zoning case that I believe should be looked into. It is Pennington versus Rockdale from 2001. In that case, a court upheld a zoning denial based on consistency with the Comprehensive Plan. That is on Jenkins Bowen's website, and it's my understanding that they represent this county in zoning matters.
Okay, thank you. And just for clarification, sir, I know your time has run, but I do have a clarifying question. Maybe others may. In listening to your comments, I'm hearing concerns about the transition to the UDC and the incorporation of the Future Land Use Map and Comp Plan with that. And certainly, I want to make sure that we do address those questions. Your comments came with respect to specifically Comprehensive Plan Amendment 4-, and I scratched it out here, so it was 4-3. Was there something particularly with this one that you had an objection with, or are you looking for us to address your questions about the overall process?
No, Madam Chairwoman, it was not specific to that or any of these Future Land Use Map amendments. It was more general, more general question to what is in the draft UDC or what is not in the draft UDC.
I see. What I would like to do is have the board vote on this last Commissioner Proposed Amendment, and then I will call up staff so we can address your other comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, may I just ask a question, please?
I have another question.
At the top of your statements, you mentioned your address, and I don't want you to mention your address again, but where do you reside in relation to this location?
I believe that's District 4, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, I reside in District 3. My address is 2141 Sedalia Court.
Okay, I just wanted to know where you are in relation to this particular property, so thank you for answering my question.
Again, it's just general to what we're doing.
Right, I understand. But you mentioned your address at the top of the meeting, and I didn't catch it, so I was just trying to orient myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you. And just for clarifying, for anybody that ever comes and addresses the board, you are not required to provide your address. You are required to provide your first and last name. With that, Commissioners, I move that we approve CP-4-3 as it was presented by staff.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All right, call the question. The motion carries 4-0.
Thank you, and as far as the agendas that I had put together, this is it.
Conclude your portion.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate you walking us through this and meeting with Commissioners in advance to prepare.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I'm going to call up our Community Development Director to respond to the comments that were made at the end of ZD-3, and if all of the concerns can't be addressed today, we'll just ask that we provide some follow-up after today's meeting.
Yes, absolutely. Good morning, Chair and Board. I am Jessica Gwynne, Community Development Director. Appreciate the comments, and of course, those are related specifically to the Unified Development Code, which is still underway. There is not, so to speak, a draft Unified Development Code at this point. There is one installment of three that is now available. It's available on the website, and that's what I've briefed all of you on recently over the last several months. First installment really deals primarily with the sort of procedural, more administrative side of things. The second installment, which we expect to receive from our consultants soon in draft forum, will deal with the zoning piece of it, the piece that probably our public's a little bit more familiar with in terms of the zoning districts and zoning standards. and zoning standards and what have you. So we expect that we'll receive that soon. Staff, of course, will review it for consistency and for accuracy. We'll share it with the Board of Commissioners, meet with each of you, just as I did before. We'll put it out there publicly and look forward to having some public meetings to really talk about that in greater detail. And then, of course, the third installment will be the component that deals mostly with the development standard, so parking and landscaping, those sorts of things. So what the speaker is referencing is the Unified Development Code, the Code Assessment, which came out in November, I believe, of 2023. And as you'll recall from our previous discussions regarding that document, it was simply, the consultants had gone through, they had reviewed all of our current zoning standards and development regulations. They had spoken with staff, they had met with the Steering Committee, they had had public meetings and they provided some outline of, here are some of the things that we see as opportunities to address Unified Development Code. Here are some things that we've heard. Are we hearing that right? Here are some recommendations of how perhaps we move forward. From there, we provided some feedback. And one of the things that was not really clear in there is currently in our code, there is some reference between the zoning districts and the future land use map, future land use categories. As you all know and as our speaker referenced this morning, the zoning ordinance is a tool of implementation of the comprehensive plan. The Georgia State Planning Act requires that we update our comprehensive plan, a full update every 10 years. Cobb's annual update is a little bit unique. Most counties don't do that, but it's something that Cobb County has done over the years. So anyway, we've got our next full year, full tenure update coming up in 2027 and we're looking forward to getting started on that. So the future land use map designations are set in the comprehensive plan. Those could potentially be changed if it's in the interest of the community, if that's what we're hearing through that public input and also from the Board of Commissioners as the policymakers, if there's some feeling that maybe we need to have new future land use categories or if we need to eliminate or change some. That's always an option. That process is done every 10 years. So if we were to, you know, as we currently have it in our code, have the future land use map tied to the zoning categories, anytime that we update the comprehensive plan and change our future land use categories, we would need to go back and make sure that we've made the same changes in the zoning ordinance and the Unified Development Code. That's not typical. Most counties, and I've worked for a number of counties and cities and have a lot of familiarity with zoning codes, it doesn't specifically say, okay, if this property is R20, here are the appropriate future land use designations. That reference is usually in the comprehensive plan itself. So it would say, okay, so very low density, that includes these zoning districts. That's how it's typically done. However, we are, at this point, we are proposing, we've already talked with the consultants and they are planning for right now to go ahead and include that one-for-one designation, although it's not something that's required or something that's even typical. We are, because it has been in Cobb County's code for so long, we're going to propose to go ahead and include that as we move forward with the next stage of the UDC draft. So you will see that reflected, that R20 would be appropriate in these future land use categories. As you know, the comprehensive plan, the future land use map is a policy guide. It is something that staff references in preparing our recommendations on zoning and it's also something that's a tool for the Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners to consider in making decisions on zoning.
Thank you, Director. I appreciate that robust clarification of how the Comp Plan is expected to tie into the UDC and our history of including reference to that in our existing code. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Jessica? Yes, Commissioner Gambrell.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, and it was actually just last year, you said 23, it was actually 24. We just had a new update of the UDC last year, which was 24, not 23.
No, the document I was referencing and that our speaker referenced was the Code Assessment, which was completed in 2023. So the piece that you have now is the first draft of the Unified Development Code itself, the first installment, one of three.
Okay, but I know myself and many of the Steering Committee members have great concerns over what was just released and that we reviewed, just what was it, last August, September, I believe it was, timeframe. But if that is a procedural administrative document, why isn't the comprehensive plan, since it is a policy guideline, referenced in that today? I guess that is where the concerns are because to me, if it's a procedural administrative document, that policy needs to be in there in order for staff to address it.
And it will be, but it's not in that piece. So the chapters that you saw include how are applications filed. Here are all the things you have to do to file an application, whether it's for rezoning or whether it's for a permit or what have you. That piece where it ties in, the comprehensive plan is going to be in these zoning standards. So this will be in the second installment that you see. So that's where it makes reference to, if a rezoning is considered, here are all the things that we take into consideration as we do zonings. That's where also you'll see that one-for-one, okay, here's our zoning districts and here are the future land use categories. So it's going to be in there, but the chapters that you've seen to this point, that's not the appropriate place in the document for that information. It will be in there, you'll see it in the next installment.
So how are you referring to the document that we all saw and that the speaker was referencing last year? What are you calling that portion of the document?
Okay, the piece that's currently, that was put on our website recently, that is the first installment of the Unified Development Code, the first draft of the first installment. As you recall from our previous conversations, there are several chapters in the Unified Development Code, just as there are in any code, and there are several sections in our current zoning ordinance. That's a big elephant to eat all at once. So the Unified Development Code in its draft form is being presented in three installments. So the first installment included Chapters 1, I can't remember all the exact chapter numbers, but it was the administrative chapter, that all of the language in there that essentially authorizes us to have zoning ordinances, the standard sort of things that you see at the front side of the zoning ordinance now. That goes in there. Part of the definition section, so Chapter 9 was also included in that first installment. We'll continue adding to Chapter 9 as we have definitions that are relevant to the specific, to the next two installments. So we'll include in the next Chapter 9, we'll continue updating and adding to that with the zoning definitions. When we get into the development standards, we'll continue adding to Chapter 9, Chapter 9, the definitions that are specific to development regulations. So you've seen a piece of it. So the next piece is the next chapters. The last installment also included things like non-conformities, how do we handle non-conformities? So that was the first installment of three, the first draft of it. We'll get the next installment of three here shortly and then we'll have the third and final installment. All of those will be considered and voted on as one holistic document, but for the sake of reviewing, taking feedback from the Commissioners, from the public, updating, revising, we're taking it a piece at a time that then we'll bring back as a whole and say, okay, here's the entirety of the document that we've been through. We've looked at it all several times, we've put it out there publicly. Now it's going to all be adopted in bank as one document.
So, and again, I can propose this to Dr. McMorris, but it sounds like we need to be having public hearings on each portion of this UDC as it's coming out because I know I've got a lot of concerns that I've shared with you that are now very concerning because if this is the first document that we're going to continue to merge into others, from my perspective, I haven't seen the issues that I have addressed yet. So my only assumption is that it's carrying forward. And I know one of my biggest concerns about the document that I saw just last year was essentially, a lot of the zoning decisions are going to be taken away from the Board of Commissioners. One of the other things that was put in there that we're going to potentially eliminate, the Planning Commission. We're also going to put in rules that you can't serve on the Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioner, or I'm sorry, Planning Commission and then BZA. So if that, if we're looking at these sweeping changes, you know, you're having individual conversations with each of the Commissioners, we're not hearing each other. Why are we waiting until the very end when all of this gets compiled together and we haven't addressed the issues that are in the first step one? We're just going to keep snowballing it and then we're going to get hit as a board because we know if this is going to keep snowballing, the consultants are going to want to come back for more money.
If you don't mind here, I know you may want to respond, but...
Yeah, I do have some responses to that.
What I've been proposing in response to this dialogue is for us to have a work session to just address the UDC.
Yes.
We are certainly beyond the scope of what was intended for today's meeting, but it is related to it and I perceive there's opportunity for us to flesh this out more with all of the board present. Is that something?
Actually, that is your February work session. February work session is already set up. It's going to be UDC and Commissioner, to your point about having public meetings on all of these, we are. The reason that we didn't have public meetings yet on the first installment is because it would have fallen during the holiday time and we wanted to be sure that we provided ample opportunity for everyone to participate. So we will actually be packaging one and two together because for the general public, the first installment really won't make a lot of sense without the context of the zoning standards. So we are going to have some more public meetings on those. We'll have separate public meetings on three. We're going to do a UDC work session for the board next month. A lot of the things that you've mentioned as concerns, if you look at the document that's currently out there, yes, has had been addressed, so I'll be happy to highlight those. But for instance, you mentioned Planning Commission and BZA, whether or not somebody could serve both boards. We have changed that. So yes, if someone currently serves on both boards or if down the road you wanted to appoint your Planning Commissioner to also be your BZA member, that's not going to change. So a lot of the things that you've referenced actually are not going to change. We've cleaned a lot of that up already. So we're looking forward to the work session next month and certainly happy to sit down and walk you through the current installment again, if you'd like.
Well, has the current installment changed since the comments I gave you?
Yes.
So I guess then, why haven't we seen that document?
It's available, yes. It's been put out there. I'm glad to send it to you again, but it's currently on the website.
Okay, so nothing against you, but I have an issue that we're putting information out on the website but not sending it directly to the Commissioners so that we are aware that a new updated version has been put out there.
And I'm not sure that I didn't honestly, Commissioner. I'll have to go back and look because it's been some time, but certainly we'll be sure to continue keeping the Board of Commissioners apprised on that.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner, for your questions. I'd encourage you to talk to Jessica if you have additional questions. That should arise before our work session so you can get a step ahead for some of the questions that may come up during that. I know this is a typical communication for our UDC, excuse me, for our Comprehensive Plan Amendment discussion, but with the transition to the UDC, I can certainly understand concern if it's anticipated that our regular process of addressing the future land use map is not perceived to be a part of it. So thank you for coming up here today. Commissioners, do you have any closing comments or questions for today? With that, thank you again for being here. Thank you for our residents for coming out today and we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting. Next month, we will resume our zoning hearings on that third Tuesday at 9:00 AM. Thank you.